Meeting of the Planning Board, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is an extension of preliminary approval for Core Land Division in Kings Park. And we have the affidavit of posting.
Captain David's good.
The applicant requests an extension of conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision number 1169 map of Core Land Division. The subdivision number 1169 map of Core Land Division received conditional preliminary approval for a three-lot subdivision on February 6, 2019. Preliminary approval of this subdivision expired on August 6, 2023. The applicant submitted a request for a ninth extension on August 1, 2023. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends a six-month extension. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Thomas Birch to extend the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision number 1169 map of Core Land Division for a period of six months. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a retroactive six-month extension of conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision number 1169 map of Core Land Division beginning August 6, 2023 to February 6, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Colado. Is the affidavit David posted?
Affidavit.
Okay, great. Is there anyone representing the applicant who would like to address the board at this time?
I don't believe he's here.
No? Okay. We're good then on that because we do have the affidavit, so. Okay. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard on this matter? Are there any questions from the board at this time?
No.
Okay, hearing none. In the matter of number 1169 map of Core Land Division, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. In the matter of extension of conditional preliminary approval, number 1169 map of Core Land Division, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is adopted.
The next item is an extension of final approval for Plymouth Estates in Smithtown. We have the affidavit of posting. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1172 map of Plymouth Estates. The subdivision number 1172 map of Plymouth Estates received conditional final approval for a five-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on August 12, 2020. Approval of the subdivision expired on July 28, 2023. The applicant submitted a request for a sixth extension request on July 10, 2023. The applicant requires additional time in order to file the subdivision and performance bond paperwork with the town. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of 180 days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Tasso Sheen to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1172 map of Plymouth Estates. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1172 map of Plymouth Estates to expire on January 24, 2024.
Thank you. And the affidavit is good?
Affidavit's good, ma'am.
Okay. Is there anyone representing the applicant who would like to address the board at this time?
He's not here also, but I spoke to him today in the office and he's trying to get this moving along, so.
Okay. Then, in the matter of number 1172 map of Plymouth Estates, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. In the matter of extension of conditional final approval, number 1172 map of Plymouth Estates, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The motion is adopted.
The next item is an extension of final approval for a map of Open Meadow in Fort Solongo. The applicant, oh, I do have the affidavit of posting. The applicant requests an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision number 1156 map of Open Meadow. The subdivision number 1156 map of Open Meadow received conditional final approval for a two-lot subdivision on February 19, 2020. Conditional final approval expired on August 2, 2023. The applicant submitted a request for a seventh extension on August 2, 2023. The applicant has indicated they need additional time in order to file the map in the office of the county clerk. The Planning Department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of 180 days. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Vincent J. Tramarko to extend the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1156 map of Open Meadow. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive 180-day extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1156 map of Open Meadow to expire on January 29, 2024.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I ask the board to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department. Thank you.
Okay. And the affidavit is good?
Affidavit's good.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? Does the board have any questions at this time? Okay, hearing none. In the matter of number 1156 map of Open Meadow, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. And in the matter of extension of conditional final approval, number 1156 map of Open Meadow, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is adopted.
Thank you.
The next item is an extension of the performance bond period for the subdivision of Foxwood Estates in Smithtown. The applicant requests an extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision number 1146 map of Foxwood Estates. The subdivision number 1146 map of Foxwood Estates received conditional final approval for a four-lot subdivision on September 18, 2019. The applicant posted the performance bond with the town board on April 20, 2020. The performance period of the performance bond expired on April 20, 2022. The applicant has indicated the subdivision is currently under construction and they require more time to complete the public improvements. The engineering department has no objection to the request. The highway and traffic safety departments have not provided comments. The planning department has no objection to the request and recommends an extension period of two years. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request to extend the performance period of the performance bond for number 1146 map of Foxwood Estates. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision number 1146 map of Foxwood Estates to expire on April 20, 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Tramarko?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I ask the board to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on this matter? Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Barbara, just a question on the highway and traffic safety departments not providing any comments. Is that an indication of anything or?
Traffic doesn't usually respond to these ones, and I think highway didn't because it's a private road.
Okay.
So they typically don't comment on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're good? In the matter of number 1146 map of Foxwood Estates, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. In the matter of extension of performance bond period, number 1146 map of Foxwood Estates, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Good night. Nope, we have one more, I think. One more. Yep.
We have two more items. The next item is a waiver request for Anna Estates in St. James, and we have the affidavit of posting. The applicant requests to waive their performance bond for the subdivision number 1048A map of Anna Estates. The subdivision number 1048A map of Anna Estates received conditional final approval for a two-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on July 15, 2009. A performance bond in the amount of $38,535 was adopted by the Planning Board, and subsequently the applicant posted the bond with the town board. In 2011, after the map was filed, the applicant requested the Planning Board waive the performance bond because the applicant was not ready to develop Lot 1 or the public improvements associated with the subdivision. On October 19, 2011, the Planning Board granted a waiver of the performance bond subject to two conditions. One, the applicant shall file a covenant in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk regarding future construction of Lot 1 with respect to any public improvements required by the Planning Board at that time. The building department will issue a building permit upon a performance bond being accepted by the town board, reflecting all public improvements to be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Two, prior to the town board releasing the performance bond, the applicant shall install the required monuments and provide the engineering department with a letter of certification from a licensed land surveyor and provide the engineering department with a final as-built survey of the subdivision. Covenants and restrictions were filed on the property reflecting the above conditions, and the applicant complied with condition number two. On July 13, 2023, the applicant requested a waiver of the performance bond required in condition number one in order to sell Lot 1 and allow the future property owner to apply for a building permit. The planning, engineering, and highway departments have reviewed the waiver request and the original performance bond estimate for the subdivision dated October 24, 2002, and offer the following comments for the board's consideration. One, the as-built survey and monuments have been completed and approved by the engineering department. Two, the subdivision was bonded for sidewalks. It is recommended sidewalks not be installed along the subdivision due to the low traffic volume, topography, and absence of sidewalks to connect to. Three, the subdivision was bonded for 13 street trees. Based on a recent site inspection, there appears to be existing healthy trees within or near the town right-of-way that can substitute as street trees. Four, the subdivision was bonded for roof drywells. Roof drywells will be required during the building permit review process. Therefore, they do not need to be on the subdivision performance bond. Five, the highway department has indicated they require no further drainage structures or curbing within the subdivision. Six, the engineering department has found the waiver of public improvements acceptable. At such time as Lot 1 is proposed for development, the town will require any necessary improvements to be made, such as a driveway apron. Seven, a waiver of the performance bond will not conflict with the LWRP approval for the subdivision. That's case number 2-25. And eight, there are no street lighting or traffic controlling signs or devices on the performance bond. Therefore, the traffic safety department did not provide comments. Based on the above comments, the Planning Department does not recommend the property owner post a new performance bond with the town and recommends approval of the waiver request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Timothy Johnson to waive the performance bond for the subdivision number 1048A map of Anna Estates. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby waives the performance bond required in condition number one of the October 19, 2011 Planning Board waiver resolution for the subdivision number 1048A map of Anna Estates.
Okay. And the affidavit is good?
Um.
Yeah.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson, would you like to address the board at this time?
Madam Secretary, Planning Board, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I work for the Planning Department in the town of Smithtown. My mother put a lot of effort into, as well as the family, into dividing this property. It's been in the family for 100 years. And so, at this time, there seems to be less interest for the family to build, and at this time, we're hoping that we can get, you know, move along and have maybe a very happy family putting a new home there. And it's been great for us for 100 years. So, I thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, did you need his address? Can you please just state your address for the record?
Yes. My permanent address is in Florida. I'm staying right here in Blauvelt, New York with some family at this time. I'm in 3697 Southwest Thistlewood Lane, Palm City, Florida.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck.
Thank you. There we go. T-H-I-S-T-L-E-W-O-O-D Lane. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in this matter? Does the board have any questions on this matter? In the matter of number 1048A map of Anna Estates, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. And in the matter of waiver of performance bond condition, 1048A map of Anna Estates, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is adopted. Good luck, Mr. Johnson.
The next item is a preliminary subdivision, number 1188 Abernacotti Platt in Smithtown. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a 1.75 acre parcel into three single-family lots. The preliminary subdivision, number 1188, map of Abernacotti Platt, consists of two tax lots located in the R-21 zoning district. To the north, east, and west is zoned R-21 with single-family dwellings and a church. To the south is Veterans Memorial Highway and a single family dwelling zoned R-15. The property has 265 feet of frontage on Veterans Memorial Highway. The topography of the site is generally flat with some steep slopes in the rear, ranging from 130 feet to 137 feet above sea level. There are no high groundwater or surface water features on the property. All three lots comply with the dimensional regulations of the R-21 zoning district except for lot frontage. However, the Board of Zoning Appeals on July 12, 2022 granted lot frontage variances on all three lots. That's case number 18726. The variance is reduced a lot frontage for each lot from 100 feet to 88 feet. As mentioned above, the subdivision fronts Veterans Memorial Highway, which is a state highway. The applicant has provided documentation from the New York State DOT indicating they have found the subdivision acceptable. The applicant has also provided a landscape plan with the application at the request of New York State DOT. Landscape plan depicts various trees and shrubs to be planted along Veterans Memorial Highway. As shown on the preliminary map, the applicant has designed each driveway with adequate areas for vehicles to turn around. This eliminates the likelihood of cars backing out onto the highway. Providing adequate turnaround areas for vehicles should be conditioned on any approval granted for the subdivision. Section 24831B of the subdivision regulations requires the subdivision to be clustered because it is adjacent to a state highway. The Planning Department recommends the subdivision to be clustered by placing a 50-foot-wide conservation easement along the rear property line and a 40-foot conservation easement along Veterans Memorial Highway. This will help preserve vegetation and steep slopes along the rear of the property and provide a vegetated buffer along Veterans Memorial Highway. The highway department has no comments since the subdivision fronts a state road. The traffic safety department has found the application acceptable. The engineering department has found the general layout to be acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways recommends the applicant revegetate the proposed conservation easement along the rear of the subdivision in order to mitigate the clearing of trees and vegetation that occurred in this area over the past several years and to provide an improved vegetated buffer. Attached is a revegetation plan dated March 17, 2023, prepared by the Department of Environment and Waterways. The Department of Environment and Waterways also recommends conditions related to land clearing and site preparation work. These conditions should be added to any final approval granted to the subdivision. Pursuant to Section 239N of general municipal law, the subdivision was referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission because it is within 500 feet of an existing state road. That's Veterans Memorial Highway. The Suffolk County Planning Commission considers the subdivision to be a matter for local determination. A decision of local determination should not be construed as either an approval or disapproval. The following resolution is recommended from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a secret negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Giuseppe and Caterina Abernacotti for number 1188 map of Abernacotti Platt for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not involve the destruction or physical modification of any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to contain any high groundwater conditions, poor soil properties, or unmanageable slopes which would impose severe environmental development constraints upon the subject proposal. C, although the subject parcel is located in hydro geological zone 1, an adverse impact upon groundwater quality is not anticipated, as this project will be subject to the Suffolk County Sanitary Code, Article 6, under which the Suffolk County Department of Health Services maintains jurisdiction over final use, lot area, and design and location of sewage disposal and water supply systems. D, the nature of the proposal mitigates against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. E, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the subject parcel, subject parcel, and compatible with neighboring land uses. F, the visual impacts of new construction will be mitigated by new plantings in both the proposed front and rear yards of the parcel. Planting will be done in accordance with both the revegetation plan prepared by the Department of Environment and Waterways and dated March 17, 2023, and the New York State DOT Landscape Plan prepared by Hervoyer Marnika, licensed professional engineer, and dated April 12, 2023. G, the tree preservation Langley Plan prepared by Hervoyer Marnika, licensed professional engineer, and dated November 17, 2022, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Giuseppe Abernacotti for preliminary approval to subdivide a 1.75 acre parcel into three lots. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision, number 1188, map of Abernacotti Platt, subject to the following conditions. A, the subdivision shall be clustered by placing a 50-foot-wide conservation easement along the rear property lines of the lots and a 40-foot conservation easement along Veterans Memorial Highway. B, since the parcel is located on a busy roadway and significant tree clearing was done prior to submission of the subdivision application to the town, replanting of vegetation in both the front and rear yards must be done. Planting shall be done in accordance with both the revegetation plan prepared by the Department of Environment and Waterways dated March 17, 2023, and the New York State DOT Landscape Plan prepared by Hervoyer Marnika, licensed professional engineer, and dated April 12, 2023. C, each lot shall provide a driveway with adequate area for vehicles to turn around in order to prevent cars from backing out onto Veterans Memorial Highway. D, the final map shall reference BZA case number 18726. And second resolve that the preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on February 16, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Colado. The affidavit?
We don't have the affidavit.
Oh, you don't have the affidavit?
Do you have the affidavit?
Um.
Mr. Tramarko, do you have the affidavit?
Uh, I don't think. Okay. Should we?
We can proceed, subject to his filing.
Okay, all right. Is there anyone who would like to be heard on this matter? Mr. Tramarko, if you wanted to make any, address the board on anything at this time, you're welcome to do that now even without the.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
You can, you can address the board at this time if you'd like. While we're waiting for the affidavit, you can, if you have any comments.
Comments on?
Anything? On, we just.
The only thing we have left, I have left is the subdivision preliminary.
And that's what, that's what we just read?
I'm sorry?
We just read that.
Oh, okay.
We did that. So, you're welcome to comment.
I asked the board to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department. I've read over the recommendations. We understand that there is a conservation easement in the front and in the back. There is additional plantings that are suggested by not only the Planning Department but our great Conservation Department, and we agree to do the plantings. I think they're going to give us a plan at some point at the, you know, between preliminary and final approval. So I asked the board to go along with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Okay. And your client is on his way with the affidavit, so we're going to proceed knowing that he will be here with it, correct? Should we or should we wait?
We can go ahead with it, but he's bringing the affidavit, correct?
He's bringing it right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So then we will continue. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in this matter? Does the board have any questions at this time?
You have a structure on the, if you're looking at the plans to the right, that's coming down?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, then, in the matter of number 1188 map of Abernacotti Platt.
We can't close it, we have the affidavit.
Okay, so we'll just, so we'll just leave this all open?
No, we're just, we're just waiting for the affidavit at this point.
All right, so then we'll just.
The hearing portion is over, but we can't close it.
So we can close the hearing?
Okay.
So we'll just, so we'll just wait? Okay.
Yep. There has to be a penalty.
Okay. Okay, now we know that the affidavit of posting is here?
It's here. It's not good. No, it's good. It's good.
Good.
You're good.
Okay, then. Okay, is. Okay, then, in the matter of number 1188 map of Abernacotti Platt, I move that we close the hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The hearing is closed. In the matter of number 1188 map of Abernacotti Platt, I move that we adopt a secret negative declaration in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is adopted. In the matter of subdivision preliminary approval, number 1188 map of Abernacotti Platt, I move that we adopt a resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. The motion is adopted. Okay. And now, we can adopt the minutes. I move that we adopt the minutes of the June 28, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is adopted, and I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.